...meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board of Princeton Municipal Complex, and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times Comcast Systems, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the 26th day of June 2019. Could I ask you to call the roll, please?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Ockman?
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Stankowitz?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Ms. Balla?
Here.
Mrs. Ginn.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, under announcements. Okay. I believe we're having a meeting of the Landscapes Subcommittee this coming week, on Tuesday, is that right?
That's correct.
Right, at 9:30 in the morning here. And there are no further announcements. You all should have gotten a copy of the findings of fact, and the revised version of this should be at your place with the revisions marked in marker, I think, yellow marker. So you've all had a chance to look at this, I don't know whether you've had a chance to look at the revisions.
You're not speaking into the mic?
What?
If you can't hear you, you're not speaking into the mic.
I am speaking into the mic.
If we can't hear you, you're not.
Is it working? Okay. What?
They just want you to speak closer.
Can't get any closer without swallowing it. Okay. Are there any changes, corrections, additions, and so on, that you noticed before, or you found on the sheet that was handed to you? It's, let's see, it's this one. Anyone? This is a long document.
Yes, David.
It's not so much a question, but in relation to item number 20, which requires or stipulates that recycling demolition materials will be done where possible, I just wanted to make the point that there is an ordinance that was adopted requiring that at least 50 percent of demolition waste be recycled. This is an ordinance that was passed a couple of years ago, so I wanted to make sure that the applicant was aware of that.
Yes.
I mean, I don't think it's necessary to change the resolution because it's in the ordinance, but...
Yes, the question, there was a question about that, and I think it was changed. Mr. West, do you know anything about the recycling of the...
Well, as David indicated, there is an ordinance that requires it. So, I mean, I don't think you have to mention it in this resolution because it is an ordinance requirement.
Okay.
Yeah, if I may on that, I don't think we need to, but particularly given the fact that the sentence now reads "where possible," I would add a sentence that says, "Recycling shall be consistent with ordinance requirements."
Okay.
That sounds good.
Yeah. Anything else? Anyone find anything else? Okay.
Ready for a motion?
Hmm?
Are you ready for a motion?
Yes, I am, if there's nothing else.
I move approval of the resolution as amended.
Second? Second, okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any further comments, discussion? Do you want to call the roll on that, since we're sending this on?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Stankowitz?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
And Ms. Ginn?
Yes. Okay, thank you, passes. And, let's see, the one thing that will be sent on, in addition to this, was the waiver, the request for waiver, or the fee, will be sent with a letter to the council. All right. And that brings us to this evening's hearing, which is Landwin Development Corporation. This is continued from June 20th. It's preliminary and final major subdivision and site plan with variance, 725 and 823 here on Town Road, and 915 Mount Lucas. The deadline for action on this has been extended to July 19th, but if we don't finish, we will be extending it again, so with that, Jerry, do you want to...
Yeah, I have a couple housekeeping items. First, I understand that at least a letter by Daniel Harris was circulated by email to members of the board, and there might have been other things that have been circulated by email as well, from other than the planning board staff. Those all should be disregarded, they're not part of the record.
Why should they be disregarded?
Because they are not...
Why should they be disregarded?
You're out of order, sir.
I'm out of order, yes, I am, but I want to go ahead, I want your name and your question. Why should they be disregarded?
Because they are not subject to cross-examination. If you're Mr. Harris, and you want to testify...
I'm Mr. Harris, I still want to defend our position.
Well, that's your answer. That is your answer, and sit down. Sit down, or, sit down, or the police will be, the police, absolutely.
Why should they be disregarded?
Say your name for the record.
Why should they be disregarded?
Because the per...
Why? Why? Why?
If you will let me answer...
I will let you answer, but you're very incorrect, and with a far...
Somebody wrote that they should be subject to cross-examination, they are not here to be cross-examined, that's why they should be disregarded. This is a formal, just a second, I'm not, I am...
To make the thing about this municipality, and regard to the way they have just been conducted business, with regard to this situation, be disregarded, in that they have disregarded history of our town. Should that be disregarded? Should this application be dis- invalidated?
Mr. Harris is standing right behind you, he should answer this question. You want to let him answer?
I want him to step down, because he is out of order. Mr. Gerald Miller, you're out of order. I'm not happy with this, you know, this is enough, and you, and this whole body is responsible and accountable for this bullshit. This is a formal hearing, but it's bullshit, and I want that to be on record. From African American who has lived, and his parents and grandparents have lived in this community forever, I want the fact that this hearing is bullshit to be on record. Thank you. Put that in the record. And I want everybody to pay attention to this, because this is bullshit. You are trying to pass a, 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 a development that is on significant historical African American and women's site. And you're entertaining to put a development on a site that has African American women and the history of Princeton...
The public will have...
...is all on record.
The public will...
And yet you're entertaining this. I'm not compromising anything, I'll put this through a hall, because it should be put through a hall.
No, you're going to be es...
And I want every single one of you, every single one of you accountable, if you make a decision to go forward with this, it's bullshit, and you shouldn't be held accountable. I'm sorry. I, 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 I'm going to call. It is about time that African Americans in this town be respected, and all of you are accountable, because this is, this is just blasphemy. This, this, this territory, this, this town, it has relevance, and yet you're going to let $1.5 million house be built on it. Shame on you! Shame on you! Shame on you!
Sir, we haven't made any decision yet.
I'm going. You ain't got to trouble me out, I'm leaving.
Now, this is a public hearing, the members of the public will have an opportunity to be heard, they'll be sworn in, and they'll testify under oath. The board should disregard what was, what was just stated. Now, I have two other items as well. One, a board member raised a question, that this has been going on for such a long time, can we get written statements as to the positions of the parties? So what I'm going to ask Mr. Letizia and Mr. Afrin is, at the end of the hearing, but before the final session, rather than, and you could make certainly an oral closing argument as well, but to make a written submission that we can distribute to the board, and that could be available to any member of the public. Bruce, can you not hear me?
You said witness submission, is that right?
No, written, written submission.
Witness submission.
A writ, a written submission, right? Just kind of summarizing your position in the...
I'm sorry, Jay, I thought you kept saying witness submission, I didn't know what that was.
Okay, yeah, and that'll be before the last hearing.
No, absolutely, it's a good idea.
Right, the third housekeeping item deals with the issue that was raised by Mr. Afrin at the last hearing, and also in a written submission that he submitted today, as to access by the objectors, experts, and maybe other objectors to the site. I've talked to Mr. Letizia about that, he's, his people are not willing to consent to that. However, I think there is merit to that request. There is no case law directly on point, and Mr. Letizia and I have really contrary views on what would happen if this would go up to a court. I think if it was presented to a court where the applicant had a number of experts who testified as to site conditions, and the objectors had experts who could not access to the site, and did not have that, the opportunity that the experts for the applicants had, I think that's a real issue, and I think there's a reasonable chance that the court would reverse a decision by the planning board if the objectors expert, experts were not given a chance to access the site. Now, Tom tells me that the members of the board can access the site, but I'm told by the chair that in fact, they were told that they could not access the site either because of hunting. What I'm going to propose is this, I'm going to see if Tom and Bruce can work out a time, along with the planning board staff, where members of the planning board who wanted to go, objectors and objectors, experts who wanted to go, can access the site with whatever representatives of the property owners who wanted to be there. We would want to notify them, and obviously part of that, they know in advance, that people would be coming on the site, because I understand there is hunting permitted, and obviously that has to be arranged so there's no safety issues. So that's what I'm proposing, otherwise I think there's a real legitimate issue that's been raised by Mr. Afrin. Tom, do you have a problem with that?
Yes. Again, for, for the record, Tom, Letizia, attorney, with Pepper Hamilton representing the applicant, Landwin Development Corp., it is correct that Mr. Muller and I had a discussion earlier today regarding this request from Mr. Afrin to, to my clients to allow access to, for his experts and clients, and we object to that request, we do not agree to give such access, and let me lay out the reasons why. There's no legal authority for Mr. Afrin's position. If there was legal authority, he would have clearly cited it in his letter. Mr. Afrin is attempting to equate these proceedings to a judicial proceeding. That is, where you have a plaintiff and a defendant in litigation, and under which court rules, the parties have a right of discovery. They can make requests of each other for documentation, to depose parties, as well as to make inspections. But that's not what this proceeding is. This is not a court proceeding. Now, I'm going to make reference to a, a case that confirms what I just said. The case is Baghdikian versus the Board Adjustment of the Borough of Ramsey, Superior Court Appellate Division decision from March 28th, 1991. And in that...
Do you have a citation for that, Tom?
Oh, I'm sorry, the site, yes, of course. It is 247 New Jersey Super 46. And in that decision...
And I'm sorry, Tom, could you spell out the first name of the case?
Sure. And in that decision, the court holds that, in this case involved a zoning board, but I think, I believe it's applicable to a planning board proceeding. It says, "A zoning board, as any administrative agency, cannot be equated with courts. While procedural safeguards employed in judicial proceedings have some genuine utility and relevance in administrative proceedings, they, quote, 'may not be transported in toto or imported wholesale into administrative agencies, given the agency's statutory foundations and special regulatory concerns.'" These proceedings are governed under the municipal land use law. And under that statute, this board is a trier of facts, which is to be based on a record. So what is the record? The record is the evidence and testimony that's presented at hearings like this. It is also the application materials that have been submitted, or any other documentation that has been submitted. It's the testimony that has been given at these, at hearings by both the applicant, its witnesses, as well as any objectors, witnesses, or any other public members. What else could be in the record? Again, under the municipal land use law, and the case law, like the case I just cited, the board may view the property, if it wishes, board members, and it can be done even without notice to the property owner, or any other parties. There is case law that supports that. Now, in our case, it may be a good idea to give us notice, because as Mr. Muller mentioned, there is hunting that occurs on the property, and of course, we would need to notify the hunters not to be present if board members desire to go to the site. In addition to that, or in lieu thereof, if board members do not wish to go to the site, you have professionals that are sitting to my right. Your professionals can access the site, and they can confirm, verify, any information that has been provided as part of these proceedings too far, and report back to this board. But beyond that, there is no obligation of a property owner to grant access to third parties, just because we have filed this application. This is private property, it is not open to the public, it is not a commercial operation where public come and go, this is a private tract of land. And it is our position that just by filing this application, we don't give up those rights to allow third parties, like objectors, or any interested party. It doesn't just have to be Mr. Afrin and his clients, but there could be other interested parties that say, "Well, wait a minute, wait, Mr. Afrin gets to go on the property and his clients, why not us? We're an interested party." That is not the framework under which these proceedings are governed. Now, I'm sure you're asking, "Well, that doesn't prevent an applicant from agreeing to access if they're requested by a, an objector or a neighboring property owner." But we're not required to do so. And I would hold that if this board, after hearing all the evidence, does make a decision to approve the application, then I believe that position would be upheld, and that the fact that there has not been access granted to an objector's counsel or its experts does not constitute reversible error. Now, I just want to make it clear, though, if you take the other approach, that is, by us denying access, you make a, you draw a negative inference, "Well, they must be hiding something," or "The facts and the testimony that they presented by their witnesses are somehow untruthful, so we can assume that, because you did not allow access to objectors." I would hold that would be reversible error, if you use that as a reason to deny this application. So I just want to let the board know that, that if you feel, "Well, what's wrong with this?" That applicants should be required to do this, and if they don't, then we'll deny the application on that basis. And I think that would be a reversible error that would be overturned on appeal. So that's our position. If there is a sort of a different approach that it sounds like the board might want to suggest, I haven't had an opportunity to talk with my clients about that. You know, maybe we don't have to decide that right now.
Right.
But in terms of the basic rule, that we must give access to the neighbors, because they have hired a lawyer, they have, they have retained experts, and somehow they're given special status. Well, you have to open the property to, to my experts. That is not the way these proceedings operate, and I'll be frank with you, I've been doing this for over 30 years, and I have never been asked to grant access by an objector, There must be a reason why there's no case law.
I'm surprised to hear that personally.
There must be no reason there's no case law. Now, of course, I'm one of numerous attorneys, and maybe, it happens all the time, but it's never happened in my practice, and I've done this quite a lot in many municipalities over 30, 30 years.
Tom, are there practical reasons why the property owners don't want to do this? Are there practical reasons why the property owner doesn't want to do this? I mean, certainly it could be set up so that there is indemnification provision, insurance, and they could be protected, so I don't understand what the practical reason is.
I didn't say it was a practical reason. Maybe one of the reasons, we don't trust the experts, we don't trust the objectors. I think we have the right to, for whatever reason, to deny the access. Now, I'm not, I'm not saying there cannot be any inspections by another party. The board, as I said, can have an, can do its own inspections, or its professionals. And again, you could, they could report back.
On that exact point, is, and I may be mistaken about this, so I want to frame it as a question rather than a statement, but I can't, anyway, is it, is it true that the board may, at the applicant's expense, retain experts whose specific areas of expertise may exceed, in certain areas, that of our own distinguished panel of experts that, you know, represent us all the time? I mean, because you made clear that the municipality can, municipality's experts may, professionals, excuse me, may have, by right, access to the property, and in the, in the past, I've known of applications where you bring in an expert with a particular area of expertise, whether it's forest ecology, or whatever.
Right.
I don't know, hydrology, et cetera. So I guess that, that's a question I'm posing to you, Mr. Muller?
Yeah, the answer, absolutely.
X, okay.
Okay. And just a couple of comments, and I think Mr. Afrin wants to be heard. First, I mean, the case cited, it had nothing to do with, with objector access, right? Completely different.
No, I, I was citing that for the proposition that these proceedings are not, is not a judicial proceeding.
Sure, that's absolutely true, and I know in, in the submission, Mr. Afrin made today talked about subpoena, et cetera, and I agree, I don't think there's any, I don't think that's a basis for requiring objectors to have access to the site. Cox does say that when board members access the site, at least when they're invited by the applicant, they can bring along objectors, so it does say that. And in addition, you indicated that objectors really don't have any special status, I don't think that's true. Certainly, the, Cox says explicitly, for example, that if a, an applicant basically takes all the time permitted by the, by the clerk to present its case, and refuses to grant an extension to permit the objectors to present their case, then the board has the right to deny the application, and that might have some...
But it's not just objectors, it's any member of the public.
Analogy here, I'm sorry?
Any member of the public.
Yeah, sure, right, exactly. But I think there's some analogy here.
But again, we're talking about, we're talking about the hearing, and I completely agree with you, Mr. Muller, that it has to be a fair hearing, all parties, interested parties who wish to speak shall have a fair opportunity to speak, whether it's questions or whether...
I think it's a very limited interpretation, I mean, I think the fundamental idea is that it has to be fair to the objectors too. Now, the objectors could be unreasonable, I mean, you've, I'm sure, seen many cases, I have as well, where the objectors have not been particularly reasonable, but if they act reasonably, I think they're entitled to deference.
Well, wait a minute, now, so anyone, any interested party of the 250, you know, feet individuals who have been notified of this application, because they've been notified and are an interested party, they have the right, I think that's what you're, you're suggesting, Mr. Muller, that they have the right, if they so desire, to access our property, just because they received the notice of an application before this board?
That might, that might be too broad, but when you have a case in which you have a group of objectors that have hired an attorney, they've hired experts, part of what the experts really need to do to present effective testimony before this board is to see the site, I think it's a different situation, I think it's more limited.
Again, I, I think then you'd be equating it with a judicial proceeding, and this is not a court action. This is an administrative proceeding where an application is being brought to this spot.
It's a quasi-judicial, it's a quasi-judicial proceeding, that's the way it's characterized.
Yes, I agree with that, but it still, in that case talks about it, just the fact that it's quasi-judicial does not mean that all the rules of court apply.
Can I just clarify something?
Yes.
Is it accurate to summarize your position as you, you, you are denying this request because you can, and like, they, they don't have a right to get on the site, so, so you're saying that they can't, correct? I mean, that's basically what you said.
Yes, that we have the right to deny it.
So I guess the clarification I have is, so if, whatever the board decides, if there is a lawsuit, and then it does become a judicial process, there would be discovery, and there would be cross-examination, et cetera, and the, the objectors, experts would potentially be on the stand, and they, they might assert X, Y, or Z about the site, and so your response then is, "How do you know that? You've never been on the site."
Actually, that's not probably what will happen in a private case.
Yeah, let me, let me, Tom, let me interject. Yeah, the way it works, and this is what Tom was going to say, I'm sure, is, with respect to the, these kind of...
is a lawsuit, and then it does become a judicial process, there would be discovery, and there would be cross-examination, et cetera, and the objectors' experts would potentially be on the stand, and they might assert X, Y, or Z about the site. And so your response then is, "How do you know that? You've never been on the site."
Actually, that's not probably what will happen in a probate case.
Yeah, let me interject. Yeah, the way it works, and this is what Tom was going to say, I'm sure, is with respect to these kind of proceedings, proceedings from zoning boards, planning boards, other agencies as well, if a suit was filed, it's based purely on the record before the board. That's why the record is so important. There really wouldn't be any discovery, there wouldn't be any live testimony. It would just be basically briefing and oral argument. Tom, you want to answer that?
I agree. That's, yes.
I do. Yes, Mr. Afrin, did you want to speak?
Thank you. For the record, Bruce Afrin, counsel for various objectors. Actually, I agree, Mr. Oakman, with what Mr. Mueller said, that when there's a planning board, when a resolution is approved here, if it's challenged in court, that's done on the briefs, and the reason for that is because what happens here is the trial record. And so the court acts as an appellate court, reviewing this record, and the only thing that court will have is what happens here in front of all of you. And so we don't have witnesses at that level. Now, a challenge to an ordinance, a zoning ordinance, is different. That becomes a regular trial. So it's extremely important, and you hit on something through the side door, so to speak, it's extremely important that this record be without procedural and substantive defects, because this is the only thing that goes to the court. There's nothing extraneous in most cases that the court will consider. And that's why it's so important that everyone who is involved in this proceeding must have the absolutely equal opportunity to present evidence, because that's the only thing that's going to the judge. And I have to agree with Mr. Mueller that if our experts are denied access to the site, a court's almost certainly going to say that any approval, and I hope there won't be an approval, but any approval would be an arbitrary act. And although it's true that I haven't seen, I don't think Mr. Mueller and Mr. Latizia have seen a case dealing exactly with this issue, there are vast numbers of cases dealing in every possible way with the notion of arbitrariness by land use agencies. That's the fundamental jurisdictional issue you have. You may not rule in an arbitrary, capricious, or unreasonable fashion. Now, I think we'd all agree that if one group of experts comes here and testifies, and each did, about how many times they went to the site, and how often they looked at the site, to bolster their credibility in their view, for that applicant who puts those experts on the stand, who used their site visits to bolster their case, to turn around and say, "Well, we're not going to let the objectors and their experts see what our experts saw." And if this board were to approve such a site plan application, that would be the height of arbitrariness. And that's why it would be an illegal approval, because it would be fundamentally arbitrary. How can we possibly effectively cross-examine? How can we possibly present a case to challenge theirs on anything approaching an equal playing field if we're denied the right to see what their experts saw? And every one of their experts, on their case, they weren't cross-examined yet, so it was on their affirmative case that each expert stood up and said how many times he went to the site. One expert, I think it was the engineer, Mr. Brown, said he was there 10 times over a five-year period. Another expert said, "I went on-site visits with the whole consulting team for the applicant." Every expert talked about their access, and for no apparent reason except to deny access, the applicant says they don't want us to do that. Now, Mr. Latizia's argument is essentially the old slippery slope. Well, there are 250 people who got noticed, so we'd allow all of them access to the site? Well, they're not asking for it. The only ones asking for it are the organized group of objectors who've invested a great deal of money, time, and commitment to participating in this matter. And so that's the slippery slope argument. My God, there'll be 250 people, all with their engineers traipsing over our property. Well, that's not happening. And we don't, we don't deal with an issue if we don't have it before us. And I'll point out, the case that was cited, Baudician, does say what Tom said it said, but the problem is, he only read one part of it. It actually said, "The trial court's comparison of a zoning board's quasi-judicial function with the function of a trial judge is correct to a point. While a proceeding before a zoning board is not equivalent to a formal trial, it partakes of the character of a quasi-judicial proceeding, which must be governed by a spirit of impartiality, uninfluenced by considerations dehors the record." And so the court actually made it clear, this is, as Jerry said, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, and it goes on to note that there are numerous procedural safeguards that must be respected by the board. So Tom's citation of the decision was incomplete. That decision, as Jerry said, had nothing to do with this issue. In that decision, one board member decided to make a site inspection. No one knew about it, they just went. And they spoke about that in the hearing and the deliberations. The trial judge overturned the variance because that one person saw the site, and no one else knew about it nor could they address what he saw. That has nothing to do with this issue. This is a wholesale exclusion of the objector's experts and the objectors after the applicant has made a point of speaking to the great access that its experts have had to support their testimony. Nothing could be more arbitrary than to approve a site plan application in such circumstances. So, you know, it's clear, I think, to most of us in the room that, yes, in fact, when someone without good reason seeks to exclude people, perhaps they are hiding something. The statement that, "Well, we don't trust the experts of the objectors" makes no sense. What's to trust or not trust? They will go there, they will inspect, they will observe, and they will speak to what they see. There's no issue of trust or not trust. Are they going to steal rare plants on the site? Are they going to degrade pathways? The irony is that one of the reasons for the bonus that's being requested in the cluster is that the applicant intends to make those walkways available to the public. So after the approval, any number of members of the public, with their dogs and cats and everything else, can enter the site unsupervised, yet somehow licensed engineers are so untrustworthy that they can't do that during this procedure. After the proceeding, those engineers could go on the site, but during this proceeding, when it counts, the applicant says no. I think in the circumstances, the board should require that, and it would be arbitrary for the board to act without that access. So thank you. But as I said, there is another approach. This board, I'm sorry, this board on its own can do an inspection, or it can have its professionals. So if there's any concern, again, that of the veracity of the testimony that's been presented so far, or perhaps at the end of these proceedings, once you hear the other experts, you can go out to the site yourselves.
I didn't respond to that part of Tom's argument.
There's nothing arbitrary about an applicant denying access because there's no obligation to. How can it be arbitrary if there's no obligation on the part of the applicant, or the board has no authority to demand, to order, like a court could, order the applicant to make its property available? That's not arbitrary action.
The board would not have the authority to order that, but if you analogized with the cases that deal with the refusal to grant extensions so that opponents could present their case, the board path would be to deny the application. What I'm puzzled by is, Tom, if this board grants the application, why you would want to go up on appeal and leave an opening for Bruce, and that's a compelling argument in terms of arbitrary and capricious. He might not win on that, but he very well might win, and I just, I just don't understand why you would want to leave that issue out there. It seems to me the reasonable approach is what I said at the beginning, and you did say you would speak to your clients about that, and maybe that's where we should leave it, to see whether anything could be worked out, you know, consensually with everybody.
Well, you're right. I would have to talk to my client in more detail. We may be willing to have, again, as long as there is a board, I don't know if it's the whole board, or just some board members, or it's consultants, can come out and inspect the property. Applicants will be present. Mr. Afrin could be present, but it's your inspection, it's not their inspection. But they can be present, and we can walk around together.
I think...
That is something we could work out.
If I could respond... I think that's a non-starter, but go ahead.
Yeah, I'm glad Mr. Latizia credits me with being both a lawyer, an engineer, a planner, an environmentalist, and a forester. You know, I went to three years of law school, I'd need about eight more, eight to 12 more years to do all that, and I don't think it's reasonable to say that the objector's lawyer should be the one who has access, but the experts who know these things should not have access. And the idea that the board should go, the board's experts should go, everybody should go but the objector's experts and the objectors, really means there's no basic due process in the proceeding. I can't imagine the board ever endorsing that. I don't think it would even go beyond the law division.
No, the point is, if we're there, you would be there, Bruce.
But we would not be there.
Could you repeat that? I didn't hear what you said.
The point is, the board can go on its own. They don't have to have either of us. You just would have to notify us so we can make sure that the hunters are not present. That's fine. You can go on your own, or your professionals could go on their own, with you, if you like.
So everyone...
Neither party would be there. That's one approach. Another approach, if you want to invite us to be there, I think it is fair that the objector's counsel, and you can have his experts there if you like, can be present as well.
Might be getting somewhere.
If the experts from the objectors can be there, we're getting somewhere. As long as it's not a half-hour inspection, we're talking about a 90-acre site, so. It may even need no more, excuse me, it may even need more than one visit, and I'll note that all of the experts' witnesses had multiple visits, so it's maybe a little impractical to do 90 acres in one, two, or three-hour stretch.
Why don't, I think maybe we'll leave it at that, and you, Tom, you and Bruce could talk, and could talk with either me or planning board staff, and, you know, work out a time. We can invite planning board members. By the way, if this happens, or the planning board members go independently, but they're with either the applicant, applicant's attorneys, they should not engage in any discussion with any of them. They just observe.
Tom and I will definitely speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that was an interesting opening. All right. All right. Where were we? Are you done with your administrative housekeeping matters? Okay, thank you, Jerry. I actually have one housekeeping, I guess it's two, housekeeping matters. One is that earlier today, we made a submission of a revised fire protection plan. I don't know if that's been circulated to the board. It's a revision to remove the reference to one-of-a-kind, custom home. That is not the intent of this application, just, and so I just want to be clear on the record, there is now a revised fire protection plan on file that's going to replace, what is it, in your plan set?
It was a single page, wasn't it?
Yes, that's correct. It was, I believe, page 14, sheet 14 of the plan set.
I don't think it's, was it distributed?
It was received at the end of the day, and we got the copies out to the staff. I don't know if they received yet.
Okay, so it's on record that we received...
And I have an extra copy I can give Mr. Afrin if he'd like one, so he has the latest. And then the next item is really just to inform the board. I did speak to Mr. Mueller about this earlier in the day. Our civil engineer, Jeff Brown, is unavailable this evening. He's very ill with flu, so he is not available to be cross-examined, but he will be available at a future meeting, which I believe will be sometime in September. So I want Mr. Afrin to be aware of that, that our engineer is not here this evening to be asked any questions. But all our other witnesses are here.
Tom, you're finished with direct on all your witnesses?
Well, if Mr. Brown was here, there was going to be some additional testimony on the issue of non-structural strategies that Ms. Wilson was asking about. We do have more information on that topic, but we'll have to defer that. So with that, we will be closing our direct testimony for now, but we reserve the right to present rebuttal testimony after the objectors are finished.
Are you also reserving the right to put Mr. Brown on?
Yes.
For direct, not rebuttal, but finishing up his...
For some additional direct testimony, yes. Thank you. So I don't know if the board has any further questions of the witnesses that they've heard from last time, Mr. Hughes, Mr. Brash. I don't know if the board had finished all their questions, but both gentlemen are here this evening.
Anyone? All right. Okay, Mr. Afrin, I believe you can cross-examine now.
I'm just going to move the agendas here so that I don't have any supplemental papers. I should note before we begin, Mr. Harris's letter is new to me, I didn't even see it, so as a matter of record, I'll eventually ask someone for a copy, just to know what it said. Jerry, you had asked me to recite into the record my actual objectors. Should I proceed to do that? Yes, thank you. I am representing the following individuals as objectors. Stephen and Marilyn Jordan, 69 Herentown Lane. Anna Marty, 82, Herentown Lane. Cher and Jean Lyman, 59, Herentown Lane. Will Howarth and Ann Matthews, 95, Herentown Lane. Daphne Beeka and Evan Delacouris, 113, Herentown Lane. Sarah Wasserman, 183, Herentown Lane. Wayne and Rochelle Rebarber, 153, Herentown Lane. Henry and Vivian Wu, 45, Herentown Lane. Kunwar and Colleen Singh, 52, Herentown Lane. Igor Maniluski and Victoria McGrath, McGrath, 647, Herentown Road. I also have a copy of the email. Jerry, you had asked me to offer an exhibit.
Yeah, if you could, I think it's probably worthwhile. Now, have you offered any exhibits yet?
I beg your pardon?
Have you offered any exhibits yet, or is this your first one?
We have not offered exhibits yet.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So this will be, would it be 01?
Yeah, 01, if you could mark that. And I'll just mention, for the persons that were just named by Bruce, you can't testify independently because you're acting through your attorney. Now, if Bruce wants to call you as a witness, he's entitled to do so, but that's the way that works.
Thank you, Jerry. I may have some questions for board staff as well. We were going to cross-examine Mr. Brown, and that actually would be a large part of the cross-examination, so he's not here. We'll obviously have to do that at the next meeting. I think that means, based on how we were proceeding, that we won't put our witnesses on yet, because we were going to complete each phase one at a time. We only had Mr. Farr here tonight to testify, but I'm uncomfortable putting him on if I don't yet know what position will come out on cross-examination with the applicant's engineer. So it looks like we...
So it looks like we would only be doing cross-examination.
Seems reasonable.
I think that's reasonable.
Thank you. I do want to begin, I'm sorry, I hope this is, I'm audible. I do want to begin with Mr. Dom Bromelski, and possibly Mr. Bridger may have answers to some of these questions. So I'll begin with Mr. Dom Bromelski, if you don't mind. A question that arose in your testimony was that the site for the cluster is flat, as you testified, and less heavily wooded than other site parts of the property. Now, the question I wanted to put to you was, a project like this does not have to be built on a raised plateau, but could be built on the grade with individual houses on the grade, isn't that correct?
I'm not sure the nature of your question, if you could try and, I don't understand the point of your question exactly. I think you need to restate that.
Well, is there any reason a 30-unit development can't be built on the grade without creating a raised plateau?
That wasn't part of my testimony, but I, no, there's no reason it couldn't be built on a grade or on a plateau. I mean, what they're doing, I believe, is they have to grade the individual lots so that the drainage on those lots works on a lot-by-lot basis. And they're not, from my understanding, it's not as if they're building a plateau, a flat plateau, and then building on top of that. What they will be doing is the normal way that you would develop a property, is they would be designing a road system so it works and drains to a stormwater basin, and then there are individual lots that will access, that be accessing on the road system, fronting on the road system, and those lots will be graded accordingly so they also drain properly.
Didn't you understand that the applicant was going to actually clear-cut the entire site and raise it up to an even level by adding rubble, dirt, and stone?
I don't know, that they were definitely not clear-cutting the entire site. They would be clear-cutting areas where they anticipate development occurring, particularly for the roads and/or to construct a detention basin. That would be the normal process. The normal process would be, you would initiate building stormwater management systems so they become soil erosion control systems when it would be, as construction begins, and then you would proceed to constructing the roads and utilities. At that point, you would have lots that could be developed, fronting upon those roads. Those lots may be developed immediately after the road is installed, there may be some time period, maybe an extended time period, before those lots are actually developed.
Well, I'll leave, I'm sorry.
The clearing that would occur would be to build the infrastructure, if you would, first. The individual lots would be determined as they actually developed those lots. That's what I would anticipate happening.
Well, you've given your understanding. I believe the engineers for the applicant testified to the contrary, but when Mr. Brown is here, I'll address that more directly. Thank you. Now, this really can be directed to any of the board's staff. Has the master plan been amended to designate this property, the landwin site that we're dealing with here, as desirable for clustering?
Bruce, why don't you ask a foundation question as to whether the master plan addresses any site as suitable for clustering?
I couldn't hear you, Jerry.
If you could just do, create a foundation, just ask whether the master plan designates any site as suitable for clustering.
I'll rephrase then. Let's go back then. For any of the board's staff, are you aware of any provisions in the master plan that designate any particular property or part of the community as desirable for clustering?
I'm not aware of the master plan designating specific parcels for cluster application.
Thank you, Mr. Laplace. And is it fair to say, rendering the question more specific, though it may seem repetitive, that the master plan has not been amended to designate this property as desirable for clustering?
There was a master plan reexamination report in 2017 which did express the goal of preserving sites in terms of fostering cluster development and other open space, you know, endeavors, so it does-
Well, my question was, did the master plan get amended to designate this particular property as desirable for clustering?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure you understand the question. The master plan sets forth a goal statement or a policy, and then you have to follow that by setting it into ordinance through the zoning code, so the master plan wouldn't specifically designate a parcel for any particular treatment.
You're not aware of the state law that requires the master plan to make that designation?
Could you cite the precise law that says the master plan would give a specific zoning designation?
Mr. Laplace, you're the planner, it's a question I'm putting to you. Are you aware-
No, I'm not aware of it. I'm answering your question.
No, I think the comment by Mr. Laplace is in order, and you're asking whether he's familiar with the provision in the municipal land use law, if you could identify that provision. I'm not aware of it myself.
I'm just asking if Mr. Laplace is aware of such a provision.
My answer was no.
Thank you. I'd like to discuss the calculation for bonuses in this 30-unit development, excepting, for the sake of argument, that the as-of-right plan shows 20 units can be built, the applicant has claimed a right of 10 additional units for a bonus. Now, with respect to the 70% open space allotment, the plan calls for a 10% bonus or two additional lots. I'd like to ask if specifically the formula for the open space bonus component can be set forth by the staff?
When you say this, when you say the specific formula, are you meaning the actual numbers, or just in general how the process takes place?
No, the general method in which one calculates a bonus for open space.
Bruce, your question is, what criteria are used to determine what is open space?
No, my question is, what is the criteria for calculating the bonus units based upon allotment of open space?
I mean, your question answers that, isn't it? It's, if it's 70% open space or more, it's 10% bonus.
Well, then you've answered it. I wanted it in the record specifically what it was from staff, but I'll accept that. Now, with respect to the walking paths, what is the actual criteria by which two additional lots have been awarded?
Okay. Sorry, we just want to make sure we're accurate.
Please.
So my notes, or my test, my report, and also the code here indicates that you must have, exceed 1,000 linear feet of walking path in order to get that 10% bonus.
Thank you. Now, with respect to the affordable housing bonus allocation, what is the specific criteria for calculating those additional six lots?
I believe all these questions that Mr. Affrin is asking related to these calculations are on page three of Mr. Dobromelski's memo.
That's correct. I mean, on my, on page three of my report, it indicates the three points I think you're making. One is that 71%, or more than 70% open space resulted in a bonus of two lots. More than 1,000 linear feet of walking path resulted in a bonus of two lots. And dedication of a parcel, three acres, to municipality for affordable housing resulted in a bonus of six lots.
Now, it's been set forth that 18% of the affordable housing allocation is constrained land. Is my understanding correct?
I'm not sure where you got that information from. Can you-
I actually took it from the testimony offered by the applicant.
Okay, so you would have to ask them that question. I didn't offer that specific information, as far as I know. If that was taken from the plans, then it would be taken from the information provided to the board.
What study has the township staff undertaken to determine how many units of affordable housing can be built on this allotted site?
I'm being told there were, there's no study specifically to answer that question at this time.
Has any concept plan been produced for the use by township staff identifying any proposal to build affordable housing on that site?
I have not seen a plan, and from what I've been told, there has not been a plan provided or produced yet.
Thank you.
I can concur with that. And just a note for the record, Princeton's a municipality, not a township.
For the record, then, if I should say town, township, municipality, or God forbid slip into borough, it all means the same thing. Thank you.
But I'd like to just make a point of clarification regarding affordable housing concept plan. There's no requirement of the applicant to present an affordable housing concept plan. It's, the only requirement is us to dedicate the property. So I don't know what the rationale is behind asking such questions.
The rationale is very simply that if there's no reason to believe any given number of units can or will be built on the site, then it would be an arbitrary grant of six luxury units to the developer, who would effectively be manipulating the affordable housing laws.
But I think Mr. Lattisia's point is well-taken, that the obligation of the applicant is just to offer for dedication the three acres. Now, if it was all constrain, I mean, there is a legitimate issue. For example, if it was all constrained, I think the testimony was, I had 17%, but if it was all constrained, you know, I don't think that would fly. And maybe it's a, maybe given the configuration of the constrained lands, there's a real issue, but I think the burden would be on the objectors to-
I think the testimony from our experts have indicated it's 18% of constrained land of the three acres, and it's all in one area of the property, in the back area of the property.
The southeast, southeast corner.
So the majority of it is uplands.
Some of these issues have not actually resulted yet in litigation in the courts, but the contention of the objectors would be that if a site is inherently unsuitable for affordable housing, and there's no evidence presented that it is going to be suitable or even used in any real way for affordable housing, then it would be an arbitrary act for a board to grant six luxury units above the 20 conventional. So that's a legal position, we'll assert, and I want the record to establish the absence of documentation at the board level for these points. And I mean no criticism by any, as to anyone, but it's a factual issue. And so this is a legal question that may eventually get resolved. But our position would be that it would be arbitrary for the board to grant these extra units if there's not the slightest indication that affordable housing can or will ever be used at that site. So that's the purpose for the questions.
Michael, this has to go, the three acres has to go before council for determination as to whether they would accept it, correct?
That is correct.
Right, so it's probably, the issue might be better joined there than before this board, but you're entitled to what legal position you want to take.
Well, we don't know when council will act. We need to make a record here, and maybe board members will find this persuasive. And so I have an obligation to make this record. Has any study been undertaken by township staff as to the developable part of the affordable housing segment after taking into account a standard allocation for roads, emergency access around a proposed structure, utility access, sanitation access, things of that nature?
No.
Thank you.
Just a clarification, now, we have up on the big screen, in the screens before us, Thompson Woods Cluster Subdivision. Who's put that up? Is that something-
I did not.
We put that up just because, but we can take it down if you'd like. We wanted to make sure that we have it available for the cross-examination.
It's always nice to have help during cross-examination.
But what, again, just to answer your question, Mr. Muller, what you see before you are the exhibits from the applicant. This is A1, okay?
If I could ask a quick question. If council has to act to accept the donation of this parcel for affordable housing, and they choose not to do so, how does that impact the approval?
I think the approval has to be conditioned upon acceptance of the parcel by council.
I don't have a legal position on that, so we'll reserve till the relevant time comes. But certainly, minimally, would have to be a condition, and I would question, well, actually, I'll state the proposition, that it may not be a complete application if we don't know whether or not council will accept this land, because the application is conditioned on units above 20, and therefore, if we don't know council will accept the dedication, I would submit, and I'll reverse what I said, I would submit we don't yet have a complete application. So I'll take that position as a matter of law.
I'm sorry, Mr. Affrin, what is your position?
Our position would be that if we don't know that council will accept the affordable housing segment as a dedicated piece of land, in other words, if we don't know if council will take this land, then there's no complete application, because the application seeks six additional units without a predicate fact being known, namely whether council will ever accept the land.
Well, obviously, I disagree with that position. The township governing body, sorry, I didn't mean to say township, the governing body, the council, is another agency that needs to grant an approval related to this. And under the municipal land use law, an approval, your approval can be conditioned on other agency approvals like council, so in this example, their acceptance of the dedication, as well as, by the way, the walking pass is another area that has to be accepted, would have to be a condition of the approval. We agree with that.
Well, it seems to me that if the absence of the six units, the loss of those units, if council does not accept the dedication, would mean a new application must be filed, not just a minor amendment, then the application is not complete because the predicate facts don't yet exist.
Derek, the application has been deemed complete, correct?
Yes, sir.
I think that's sufficient, and if Mr. Affrin wants to challenge that in some form, obviously, he's entitled to do so.
We've set a position. Thank you. Has any environmental study been done on the affordable housing site by township staff to determine whether or not there is any contamination from any pollutants on the site, including, but not limited to, former agricultural use?
No.
Thank you. A question was raised by Mr. McGowan as to whether there's any occupant- A question was raised by Mr. McGowan as to whether there's any occupant in the property that is on the affordable housing site. Can staff address that issue?
I don't have any knowledge of that.
Assuming there is an occupant on that property-
There is no occupant. I believe we testified to that. There's no occupant. So, we can, any line of questioning related to occupancy can be skipped over, Mr. Affrin.
If you can, if you could move on, Mr. Affrin.
I, wait for Ms. Lutisius.
The house has been taken out of service, and we went through the, the proper procedures.
That's fair enough. My notes did not reflect that information in response to Mr. McGowan's question. That's why I pursued it on cross. Staff has concluded that the utility easements will have no unreasonably adverse impact on the surrounding vicinity, including ecological and other factors. Could staff set forth the actual substantiated basis for that conclusion?
Can you tell us where that was referenced in the report?
It's referenced in testimony of staff, who stated specifically that we've concluded there is no unreasonably adverse impact caused by utility easements. I am now cross-examining, so to speak, testimony given at the earlier hearings.
Can you, who gave that testimony?
I believe it was by Mr. Dumbrumylski.
What I believe I have in my report is that the applicant needed to confirm that information.
Could you repeat that?
I believe I raised that as a question, that there needed to be testimony to confirm the point you made. I do not believe that I actually offered that as my opinion.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the clarification. What is it that you believe is missing in the application with respect to demonstrating satisfaction of that issue as to the utility easements?
I believe they needed to provide to the board information about the width of the easements and/or the nature of the construction activity that would occur on those easements in order to provide utilities throughout the site to implement their plan.
Have you received that information as of this date?
I believe they provided testimony to that effect, their engineer did.
Now, having heard that testimony, is there a substantiated opinion by staff as to whether the utility easements have no unreasonably adverse impact?
I didn't hear anything that arose to a point of me thinking that there was an adverse impact from the utility construction that they described in their testimony.
Thank you.
May I ask a quick clarifying question? By utility easements, are we talking about gas and electric, or does that also include stormwater sewer?
It's, it's the stormwater. I think specifically it's stormwater, the sanitary sewer line that run through the wooded areas.
I think that's what the testimony referred to.
So, not stormwater, but yes, sanitary sewer?
No, both. Sanitary sewer and stormwater.
Okay.
Now, what environmental consultant has the township staff spoken with to review the question of whether the additional evidence eliminates a finding of unreasonable adverse impact?
We didn't consult with any specific other environmental experts.
Thank you. Has any study been made about the compression or loss of soil horizon in connection with the easements across the wooded area that is to be preserved?
No, there was no study because the work has not been done. So, there's no way to actually study what has occurred, because it has not occurred yet. What was the testimony and the opinions offered are based upon experience of observing construction, observing land development, and understanding what is typically expected to occur, along with the area and the scope of what the utilities are and the, the impact they would have based upon the size of them compared, in comparison to the overall size of the property.
Within the easements, has any study been made about the loss of soil horizon?
No. There has not been a loss of soil horizon. Nothing has occurred.
When I refer to loss of soil horizon, I was referring to following the construction.
Understood. No. There has not been any type of study done to, based upon assumptions of what will occur when it's constructed.
Thank you very much. Is the berm actually known in New Jersey regulatory law as a class four dam?
Yeah. I, I don't recall specifically on the plan and what the applicant's testimony was. However, whatever the case may be, they would have to follow DEP requirements for the, for the berm.
Has staff made any inquiry or analysis of whether DEP requirements will be followed based on the application and the plans submitted thus far for the berm?
It's, it will be a condition of approval that they have to follow any DEP requirements.
And Bruce, I, I don't want to interrupt your, your questioning, but could you, could you go back to the soil horizon? Because that's not a term that I'm familiar with. Could you explain what that is?
Soil horizon will be addressed by our experts, but it's a term actually that's introduced by the applicant's expert. It refers really to the quality, depth, and, for lack of a better word, volatility of the soil. When it's compressed, the horizon disappears. And as a result, it becomes unsuitable for ecological purposes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Has township staff studied the effect of flooding on the tree species that will be situated behind the berm?
I assume you mean the area above the berm, not behind the berm, which will be the area where the stormwater would be controlled or would be stored, so to speak.
Right. The berm is going to hold water behind it, correct?
No, it's above it, not behind it. Just so, then, I mean, we, maybe we're getting, it's good, the basis of the berm is to hold water back. So, if you're, if you're upstream from the berm, then it's, it's not behind it. But, we tip, the way I would typically say it is to be held above the berm, not behind the berm. Because great from in terms of elevation, it's above the berm, it's upward from the berm.
The berm is going to be higher than the level of standing water, correct?
Correct.
Therefore, the water will be behind the berm. Isn't that correct?
No. Because you, we tend to think of it as water flows downhill. If the water was behind the berm, it'd be past that.
Well, the detention basin will be under the water. The water will seep down the basin. Is that correct?
There is no basin. What they are doing is building a berm to detain water over the existing grade.
Let's leave it at that. Has a township staff made any study of the effect of the standing water that will be held by the berm on the different tree species that presently exist?
There has been no study done. I don't know that there would be, how you would go about doing that specific study in this case. There are assumptions that we can be made based upon what the, the species are, as to whether they'd be tolerant of some inundation of water, or some additional inundation of water. But even those species would possibly be subject to having some problems. So, what we do look at is we look at how big is the area where the water will typically be detained, and what's the potential impact of that. That's why the code has aspects of it that say that they have to mitigate and plant additional trees to mitigate the losses. So, ultimately, there'll have to be some determination made as to what the realistic loss of trees will be in that area and how it will be mitigated.
You mean to say the determination of the realistic loss of trees has not yet been made?
There are limits based upon how large the area of detention will occur, and we assume that the entire area where the detention will occur is potentially an area where trees will be lost.
Has any analysis been made of the effect of the standing water on particular tree species that presently exist at this location?
In general, we know the tree species that are there and what their susceptibility is to that. So, but of specific species, I don't know that, there, no, there was no study. We don't do studies that way. The township, or the municipality would not go out and perform studies. We have reviewed plans and reviewed information that is submitted and offer opinion as to whether it's valid or not, or offer different opinion.
Are you a person with expertise in the life history of different tree species relative to flood and water?
I don't know that there is such an expert. I am a licensed tree expert in the state of New Jersey.
But you don't contend to expertise in this field?
I don't pretend to study trees and water. I can tell you I have over 30 years of experience of observing and managing detention basins that are forested.
Is anyone else on staff expert in the field of understanding the effect of standing or flooded water on these tree species?
Not an expert, but what we looked at, we do realize that, that some trees will die due to the water. However, the alternative is a conventional basin where you clearcut all the trees, and none of the trees would then survive. So, we felt that this was a better alternative than your conventional detention basin where the site is cleared and there's no trees survive. The intent is that with the large amount of planting that they have to do, that this area would be supplemented for any tree, trees that would ultimately die some point in the future.
Well, if they die because of flooding, how will you supplement it with new trees?
There's going to be an extended period that there, the, the project will take several years to construct. The basin is one of the first things that has to go in. And then once it's complete, there's a two-year maintenance bond. So, there's going to be a period of four, five, six years that the developer will be obligated to replace any trees that die.
If they die because they're in the middle of a flooded area, how will you be planting new trees that will survive?
We would plant trees that would be water tolerant.
In other words, you will have to alter the habitat that exists presently in order to accommodate the flooding. Is that correct?
Potentially.
Thank you. Has the township's, excuse me, has municipal staff engaged any independent expert to evaluate the projections of how much water and to what extent it will back up above or behind the berm?
Uh, yes. Joe Scoopian is our stormwater consultant.
Did he conduct any independent analysis, or did he simply comment on the applicant's submission?
He reviewed the applicant's submission.
Thank you. Has township staff analyzed the existing tree species in that location to determine if they are acclimated to wetlands environment?
We did, to some degree. There are some that are and some that are not.
Is there any report that indicates that conclusion?
Not specifically, no.
Thank you. The as-of-right plan submitted by the applicant projects 20 units under conventional zoning. At least three of those units would have to front on a road that does not presently exist. That would be an, an extension of Herrentown Road. Do you have the same understanding as I have just described?
Yes.
Just, just to clarify, there, it is a right-of-way. It's a property, but it is not a, not a improved road. Thank you.
Thank you. Has there been any, strike that. There has been discussion that the application will require the expansion of Herrentown Road. And I don't mean the right-of-way, but rather the widening of Herrentown Road. And there will also be a bike path built in as part of the application. Can staff state what will be the total extension of width from the present road to the expanded road, including both road expansion and bike paths and any sidewalk?
I don't have the exact numbers, but it was approximately three to four feet on each side, the widening. And the widening was to accommodate a bike, a bike lane within the cartway of the road.
Now, what study has township, has staff undertaken with respect to the effect on the adjoining wetlands of that expansion?
Um, no, no study has been done. The applicant would be obligated to get whatever DEP permits are necessary to widen the road.
It is the obligation of staff to reach a conclusion as to whether the application will have an unreasonably adverse impact on the surrounding ecology. Therefore, isn't it within the responsibility of staff to understand whether the expansion of the road will have an adverse impact on the adjoining wetlands?
So, my opinion is that it won't have an adverse impact. It will have an impact on the wetlands. Obviously, if you have to fill any wetlands or wetlands buffers, there's an impact. But the benefit of the bike lane, in my opinion, outweighs any impact on the wetlands.
Now, Mr. West, you as an engineer and not an environmentalist or a biologist, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, on what basis do you conclude there'll be no unreasonable adverse impact on the adjoining wetlands if you've not consulted with any specialist?
That's my opinion.
Thank you. Has any analysis been undertaken by staff as to the construction disturbance within the wetlands that will be necessitated by the expansion of Herrentown Road?
The evaluation of wetlands is not under the jurisdiction of municipal staff based on the municipal land use law. That's under the jurisdiction of DEP.
It is within your jurisdiction under the ordinance to evaluate unreasonable adverse impact, isn't it?
Yes.
Have you made any, have you undertaken any analysis of what impact construction disturbance will have to the wetlands caused by the expansion of Herrentown Road?
What's the definition of unreasonable impact?
Can you answer my question as to whether you've undertaken any analysis as to the impact of construction disturbance on the wetlands to be caused by the expansion of the road?
No, I haven't.
Thank you. Has a township been advised who conducted the tree survey for the applicant?
No, the applicant conducted the tree survey.
Has a township been advised who conducted that tree survey?
Trying to remember. I think, I know that was a question I raised.
That's what I'm asking, because you had raised the question.
Yes. I raised the question, and they did provide testimony from a tree expert. But I don't know that they, that testimony included that he actually performed the survey.
Based on the record available to you, do you presently know who conducted that survey?
I do not.
Is it fair to say you also don't know the qualifications of such individual?
If I don't know who it is, how could I know their qualifications?
Thank you. Does staff have information as to the number of trees that will be lost by the construction of the cluster? And I refer to the actual site of disturbance, not tree loss on the surrounding area.
Sorry, it's been a while since we reviewed the plans, so I apologize. I'm trying to remember specifically what's on their plans.
I understand.
But I believe they provided information indicating the number of trees that they anticipated to be lost within the area that would be their anticipated limit of disturbance to construct the subdivision. I do not believe that included the individual lots as they are developed, but it may have.
The applicant provided numbers of trees on the preserved area that will be lost due to utility easements and things of that nature. My question is directed specifically to the cluster site itself. Does staff know how many trees will be lost?
At this point, no, we don't know the exact number. One of the concerns raised by the board was actually regrading several of the lots to minimize the disturbance. So, the final number of tree loss is not known at this time.
Well, Mr. West, you said staff does not know the exact number. Do you have any numerical figure as to tree loss on the site of the cluster?
On page five of my report, I indicated that the plans indicate that 682 mature trees will be removed to construct the roads and utilities. So, that would be the elements to construct the infrastructure for the cluster, but not the actual development of the individual lots for residential homes.
So, is it fair to say no survey has been taken as to the areas that will be occupying the lots?
And that would be the normal course of business for a subdivision of this sort for single-family lots, that we would first undertake what the infrastructure being constructed, and then as the individual lots are constructed, they would be evaluated on an individual basis.
In order to approve the subdivision, you must make a finding of no unreasonable adverse impact. How can you do that if you don't know what trees exist presently on the cluster and what is likely to be destroyed?
Because I can evaluate what is in the area of the cluster, and I can anticipate what will be lost in order to construct the house under normal circumstances, assuming close to a worst-case scenario. And that's my basis, because with the ordinance, if I remember correctly, requires them to try and emphasize preservation of environmentally sensitive areas and to cluster in the areas that are less environmentally sensitive. Environmentally sensitive meaning floodplain, wetlands, things of that sort. And that's exactly what they have proposed.
Do you have any tree survey anywhere in the cluster?
I have observed the tree. I've observed what's there, and also there's indicating that they did provide that survey. It's been a while since I reviewed the plans specifically for that.
Is there any analysis of the actual breakdown of species in the cluster?
I don't know that there's been plans submitted suggesting that specifically.
The answer is no.
Right. It's my recollection, a large portions of it do not have significant trees, the area of the cluster.
But you don't know how many trees will be lost in the cluster in its entirety?
Not specifically at this time. Correct.
Has staff made any study or analysis of the impact on the ecology of the entire site and adjoining sites to be caused by the construction of the cluster?
When you say the impacts of the ecology, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking. There will be impacts on the ecology, of course, because there will be some development on the site. So, there absolutely will be impacts on the ecology. We have not performed any studies to determine to what extent those impacts will be, but based upon our review of the plans, we have, we can make educated understanding or educated review of the information to determine, are they in fact preserving the areas that are the more sensitive areas as described by the code, or by the idea you would typically call the areas that are wetlands and floodplain to be environmentally sensitive lands? And that's what the basis of it is.
Is it fair to say that no analysis has been done of the impact environmentally and ecologically on the surrounding sites from the destruction of vegetation in the cluster?
On the surrounding sites?
Yes, the remainder of the landwin site and neighboring properties.
Okay, now, so you're saying, just so I'm trying to understand. So, first off, there's been no study done. The town, the staff does not do studies. The staff reviews the applicant's information that is submitted. So, all the questions about, has the staff produced studies? As far as I know, we have done those studies. So, the answer to all your questions about studies, we know. We have done those studies.
And there is no analysis submitted to you, strike that. What written analysis has been submitted to you by the applicant as to the environmental or ecological impact on the remainder of the landwin site or neighboring properties to be caused by the cluster?
Madam Chair, I object to the question because there's no requirement for such a study. This application's been deemed complete. We provided all the documentation and reports required. Sorry, I'm speaking to the wrong mic. The application was deemed complete. The applicant provided all documentation, reports, studies that are required under your ordinance and as requested by your staff.
Is the answer that no such study has been submitted?
The applicant submitted an environmental information statement, which is what's required for their submission. That is dated August 16, 2018.
Aside from that, is there any other written submission by the applicant analyzing the ecological or environmental impacts on the remainder of the landwin site or surrounding properties?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you. There's a notation that 12 trees more than 25 inches in diameter will be destroyed, and that was submitted by the applicant. Is staff aware of any other diameter calculations in other levels, for example, between 20 and 25 inches, 15 and 20 inches?
Yeah, we'd have to look at their tree survey, but typically there would be a breakdown of trees at three or four different levels.
Well, to save time, we can come back to that. I don't want to make you do all that right now. We can look at that as well.
The answer is yes. They show trees to be removed, the type and size.
Could you identify the document you're referring to?
Sheet 23 of 28.
Thank you. What analysis has staff done as to the impacts on deer populations to be caused by the creation of the residential lawns in the cluster?
Again, I object to the question. It's not a requirement of this application.
Yeah, if you can lay a foundation for that, if there is a provision in the code that requires that, fine, but I'm not aware of any, and I think Mr. Letizia's point is well-taken.
I actually didn't ask what the applicant submitted. I asked what analysis was done by staff as to this question.
Well, if there's any standard in the code that's pertinent to this, I think it's a legitimate question, but absent that, I don't see the relevance of it.
The code specifically refers to the question of unreasonably adverse impact on ecological, environmental, and other factors, and refers to it in multiple places. Now, if deer will proliferate from a development that is immediately adjacent to preserved woodlands, then the question is relevant in terms of the impact environmentally on the subdivision, and it's directly within the jurisdiction and responsibility of staff.
Well, the unreasonable impact relates solely to basically environmentally constrained areas. Critical areas is a term used in the code, so even preserved woods would not relate to this standard.
The code specifically refers to upon the vicinity. It does not limit it in the manner, Jerry, that you suggested.
Well, certainly 226 has that limitation. 226A.
In fact, that language does not even appear in A.
Say again.
That language that Mr. Raffin's been using, substantial or adverse, doesn't even appear in the ordinance, in that section.
In that section, that's correct.
I think the language is minimal impairment, minimal degradation. I think those, that's the standards.
Section 189.1B requires, I'm sorry, section 189.1D specifically requires that the residential cluster will not have an unreasonably adverse impact upon the area in which it is proposed to be established. In addition, it says, "This evaluation shall include reference to the natural resource sources inventory." This is the standard that staff has referred to and that multiple times the applicant's experts have referred to. I cannot count how many times they have said, "There will be no unreasonable adverse impact to a vast array of ecological considerations." Now, frankly, Jerry, what's good for the goose is good for the gander.
Okay, I mean, you cited the relevant section, and that's the basis for your question. So, you can proceed.
What analysis has been undertaken by staff as to the impact of deer proliferation on these adjoining woodlands and wetlands to be caused by the creation of this residential project?
There has not been a study.
Thank you. What analysis has been done by staff as to the impact on animal life to be caused by the removal of trees, both in the cluster and in the so-called preserved area?
There's been no specific study, just analysis of what was submitted and understanding of what typically occur with development.
Has any analysis been done by staff as to the effect of creation of new forest edge to be caused by either the cluster, the utility easements, or the burn, or any other factor in this project?
There's been no specific analysis, but I did state in my report that typically creation of more edge would create a more diverse habitat, which is what I was alluding to, that the edge habitat tends to be more diverse than areas that are not edge, and that by developing and creating more edge, there's potential of creating more diversity.
In other words, you would be changing the habitat by cutting out forest and creating edge. Isn't that correct?
Absolutely.
And my question is also directed to what is the impact on the woodlands themselves by the creation of this edge? Has any analysis been done as to that factor?
Again, there's no specific analysis, but there are impacts that occur. The question is, are they adverse or not? And that's the determination that needs to be made.
And in any of your reports, do you address the impact of edge creation on the forests and woodlands? Not on animal life, but on the vegetation life?
There's no analysis of it specifically, just the idea that understanding of typical development, what is expected to occur, and factoring that into the overall statement of whether there's an adverse impact or not based upon the cluster.
So, you can't point to any part of your report that deals with this specific issue?
Not an analysis of it specifically.
How many times has each member of staff been to the site, if at all?
I've been there two or three times.
I've been there two or three times.
I've also been there two or three times, and I've also studied aerial photos from, that were submitted, as well as aerial photos available on, via the internet.
Well, I'm asking about inspections of the site itself.
No, I've been there two to three times.
And when were those, for each staff member, if you could identify when those, approximately when those inspections took place, or how recently?
Over the last six months.
Thank you. Why did you go to the site? And this is directed to all three members of staff.
We visit all sites that are the subject of a site plan.
And my question is, why is that a part of your professional work?
So, we're familiar with the site.
Do you feel you could give your reports and conclusions without such inspection?
They're much more valuable if you've done a site inspection.
Thank you very much. Can I have a moment, please? I just want to speak to one of my experts. For the time being, that can... That's all. I'm sorry. I didn't want to interrupt. For the time being, that concludes my questions for staff. I'm going to turn to another subject. Did the chair feel this is an appropriate time for break, or should we continue on? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I was going to change to other witnesses, so I didn't know if there was an appropriate breaking time.
I think this is probably a good time to take a five-minute break. It's okay. Okay, everyone?
Thank you. We're next going to call Mr. Kurtz. You might, you might need that. Okay. Ms. Gunning, may I be, proceed? Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Okay, whenever you're ready, if you're ready. Some of these questions may be repetitive, but some need to be put to each witness. Mr. Kurtz, how many times did you visit the site?
Four or five times over the last six months.
And how long was the duration of each visit?
Anywhere from an hour to an hour and a half.
It may seem self-evident, but what was your reason for making those visits?
Inspecting the site-specific conditions.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Inspecting the site-specific conditions.
And why did you need to do that as opposed to relying on documentary information?
Well, after reviewing the applicant's application, I felt appropriate to inspect... I felt appropriate to inspect the site and review the documents at the same time.
Do you feel you could have adequately provided independent expertise if you did not visit the site?
No.
Thank you. You testified that you reviewed the report from the Princeton Environmental Commission, is that correct?
Yes.
And you said that there were some things you agreed with and some things you disagreed with, if I understood your testimony.
I don't remember particularly making that statement.
Well, do you have the report with you?
Were you referring to the environmental impact statement?
No, I'll tell you what, we'll move on. I'll go back to that later. I was referring to the environmental commission's report. But I'll go on to that later. Thank you. Well, I'm going to move on at the moment. You had a slide that identified the location of vernal pools, if I'm correct. Can you pull up that slide?
I referred to the presence of vernal pools being on the site, but I never gave a location map, although I did refer to where they were located.
And how did you identify their location?
The New Jersey DEP website, the Landscape Project 3.3 Viewer, has them located on their internet site.
And did you personally go to the site to obtain the information?
I did observe them, yes.
I'm sorry, did you personally go to that website?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. Now, did you present all of the relevant documentation on the website relating to vernal pools?
Could you restate the question?
Did you present to the board all of the relevant documents from the DEP website that relate to vernal pools?
I...
Is the question, "Vernal pools on this site?"
I think the question's quite clear. We're referring to this site, not the rest of New Jersey.
There is some general information on the website about vernal pools.
Well, I'll tell you what. Why don't we have the witness do the testifying and not the attorney?
No, I thought Tom's question to clarification was appropriate.
I withdraw.
It's been clarified.
I apologize. I am referring to the vernal pools that you identified by going to the DEP website. Now, did you provide to the board all of the relevant documents from that website relating to the vernal pools on this site?
I testified that there were two vernal pools located on the north, on the southeastern corner of the property, located approximately here and here. There is a third vernal pool across the main tributary to the west. That's what I presented.
Now, my question is simply, did you present to the board all of the documentation on that website that is relevant to vernal pools on this property?
Bruce, why don't you ask a foundation question as to whether there is other information on the website relating to the vernal pools?
I don't think I need to do that, Jerry. It's a credibility challenge. I don't think I have to do that.
I mean, it assumes that there is such documentation.
He can say, "Yes, he gave it all, no, I did not," or give me an answer that is a non-answer. That's the witness's ability to answer.
I'll stay with what I said, but he can certainly answer.
Jerry, I'm pressing my question the way I presented it.
He can certainly answer.
Thank you. Should I repeat it?
Yes, please.
Did you present to the board all of the documentation from that website that relates to vernal pools on this property?
The DEP website has a buffer zone that they show that's not regulatory or not statute-supported. I only showed the locations of the actual vernal pools themselves.
And my question is simply, did you present to the board all of the documentation on that website that relates to these vernal pools?
No.
What did you omit?
I did not show what the DEP qualifies as a 300-foot buffer zone around vernal pools. They call them vernal habitats. But in actuality, the New Jersey DEP Land Use Regulation Program requires a 50-foot buffer around vernal pools.
So in fact, there is a map on the landscape program that identifies vernal habitat that is in connection with these vernal pools on this site that you did not give to the board. Isn't that correct?
I placed all the information that was regulated, required by regulation, to the board, which is the location of the vernal pools.
Isn't it a fact that there are documents on that website relating to these vernal pools that you did not provide to the board?
What kind of documents?
Namely, the mapping of the vernal habitats in relation to these vernal pools.
I provided to the board all the regulatory requirements, the locations of the vernal pools. Vernal pools have numbers. They're designated with four-digit numbers. I didn't provide the numbers to the planning, to the board.
Why didn't you think it was relevant to identify the vernal habitats that surround the vernal pools on this property?
Because that's not a habitat zone that's mandated by statute or regulation. The vernal pools, once cited and documented through the wetland process, will require a 50-foot buffer.
You would agree that this board's ordinance requires it to evaluate whether there will be an unreasonable adverse impact on the ecological features in the vicinity to be caused by the cluster, isn't that correct?
Yes.
And therefore, wouldn't information that the cluster itself is designated by the State Department of Environmental Protection as vernal habitat be relevant to the board in making those findings?
Again, I'll just restate my previous answer, that those areas delineated that are shown on the website are not regulatory or mandated by statute. All vernal pools get 50-foot buffers, and that's how I'll end my question. And I know I spoke to individuals at DEP several months ago concerning that.
Don't you agree that it is relevant for the board to know that the cluster is in a zone designated by DEP as vernal habitat relating directly to these vernal pools?
No. As I stated before in my previous testimony, there's vernal pools approximately located down in the southeastern corner. It's approximately six or seven acres in size and have large enough buffer to be protective.
Do you have the vernal habitat map here with you?
No, I don't. They're actually in the wetland areas.
Well, you don't have it with you, do you? So you can't show us?
No.
Would you define a vernal pool, please?
Well, it's a ponded area that exists normally in the springtime that provides habitat for amphibians and reptiles.
So it's not a permanent body of water, is it?
Not traditionally, but I don't know a lot specifically about them.
I'm sorry, you said you don't know a lot specifically about them?
I don't know, I'm not a vernal pool. It's not my area of expertise.
So even though it's not your area of expertise, you chose to keep information about the vernal habitat from the board?
No, I did not.
How did you make the judgment that the board didn't need to know this if it's not your area of expertise?
I provided the information to the board that was under what would regulate New Jersey DEP regulations would require.
Do you agree that you do not have the expertise to make a judgment about the relevance of the vernal habitat mapping information?
No, I can interpret the website. I can locate where the vernal pools are, and I understand what the DEP Land Use Regulation Program provides 50-foot buffers around the vernal pools. As far as my opinion, this development is protected would be protective of those vernal pools on the property.
What is the relationship in your understanding between vernal habitats and vernal pools?
I don't know.
I'm sorry, did you say, the acoustics are bad?
I do not know.
You don't know?
No.
Would you at least be able to tell us if vernal pools depend on periodic flooding from storm waters?
Yes, they rely on precipitation.
They rely on temporary water that stands for a short duration in the season, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
At what life stage do the animals that live in the pools stay in the pools?
I don't know. It's during the reproductive cycle.
Do you have any other information that you can offer in response to that question?
No.
The cluster will divert all of the stormwater on the 15-acre site away from the site, across the site, to the northwest, to the berm. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
In fact, it will divert virtually all of that stormwater, isn't that correct?
All the stormwater that falls on the proposed clustered site will be diverted to the detention basin.
Where does that stormwater presently run?
Madam Chair, I believe this question is probably more appropriate for Mr. Brown, in terms of the drainage. I'm sorry. I said that I believe that question is more appropriate for our civil engineer who is not here.
Well, I'm going to press the question. He's an environmentalist. He's commented on the existence of wetlands. He says they will not be harmed by the cluster, and it's a fair question to ask where on this site the stormwater runoff from the would-be cluster presently runs. An environmentalist should be able to answer that question.
Yeah. In general, stormwater flows over land from southeast to northwest, if you look at the topography.
Well, there's a wetland in the bottom right-hand corner, you see that?
Yes.
And that's right under where the cluster will be, correct?
No.
No? No?
No.
Looking at slide 13, you see the wetland in the bottom right-hand corner, and it's under the cluster, is that correct?
It's not under, well, it's south of the cluster.
Forgive me, it's south of the cluster. On the map, it's below the cluster, correct?
This is the north, this is the north area, so it would be south of the cluster.
Are you prepared to say where that wetland gets its water flow from?
Well, it gets it from directly on top of it via precipitation.
Where else?
I'm not sure if there's... It might be another engineer question. There might be a culvert across, a better question for the engineer.
So you can't answer it, is that correct?
Well, the... Yeah, I can't, I can't answer, no.
What study have you made of the percent of water, and if you can't answer this, say so, what study have you made of the percent of water that normally flows to the wetland that will be lost by the diversion of water from the cluster to the Van Horn?
I have not done any of those studies.
Are you aware of any figures that could tell us what percent of that water supply to the wetlands will be lost by that deviation?
That would be a question for the engineer.
Can you tell us the definition of what a vernal habitat is?
No.
Can you tell us what role a vernal habitat plays in the life history of the creatures that live in the vernal pool?
Again, it's present during the reproductive season.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
It's present during the reproductive cycle.
Can you explain that answer?
Yes. Amphibians, frogs use it during reproduction.
You mean, they leave the pools only to engage in reproduction in the vernal habitat? Is that what you're saying?
No, we're speaking about vernal pools.
My question is, what role do the vernal habitats play in the life history of the animals that live in vernal pools?
I don't know.
Your answer may be the same as the prior question, but I want to be thorough. What study or analysis have you undertaken as to the loss of natural stormwater flow to any of the woodlands surrounding the cluster that will be caused by the deviation of stormwater in the cluster?
I have not completed any studies like that.
Have you undertaken any study or analysis as to the effect of the reduced flow of water that will be caused by such deviation on the vernal pools themselves?
No.
Have you undertaken any study as to the impacts of such deviation of water on flora or fauna that live in the adjoining wetlands?
No.
Have you undertaken any study as to the effect of the deviation Have you taken, undertaken any study as to the effect of the deviation of water away from the mature woods?
No.
Have you undertaken any study as to the effect of the deviation of water on the flora or fauna that live in any of the adjoining woodlands?
No.
What study have you made on the impact of construction of the cluster on the Cooper Hawk habitat?
I have not.
Have you consulted with any specialists or expert as to the impacts of the construction of the cluster on the Cooper Hawk habitat?
No.
Have you made any study or analysis of the effect of the cluster itself once constructed on the Cooper Hawk habitat?
No.
Have you consulted with any expert or specialist on such subject?
No.
Have you made any study or analysis on the impact on avian life on any of the surrounding woodlands or on the present site of the cluster following construction or development of the cluster?
No.
Have you consulted with any specialist or expert on such subject?
Well, we do have a, we have a forester on the team.
My question was, have you consulted with any expert or specialist on such subject?
No.
What is the best way to determine if the site or any parts of it, including the entire 90-plus acre tract, are presently suitable habitat for box turtle?
Could you repeat that question, please? No.
My question was, what would be the best way to determine if any part of the site is presently suitable habitat for a box turtle?
Well, first of all, the box turtle doesn't show up on the Landscape Viewer 3.3, and in addition, we submitted the Natural Heritage request last time. Oh, okay. We, I completed a Natural Heritage request, and box turtle does not appear on the site via view at the DEP, but otherwise you do a habitat assessment.
Could you repeat that last part?
Sure, you do a habitat assessment.
I still couldn't hear the last part.
You would do a habitat assessment.
Assessment, and you would have to enter the habitat to do that, wouldn't you?
I assume so.
Would you answer?
Madam Chair, this line of questioning is on topics that, again, do not, are not required under your ordinance. A habitat assessment is not required by your ordinance for approval of a subdivision. So, again, you know,
But you can just say that.
I think we can kind of skip over this, okay? There's been no habitat assessment of the property, and there's no requirement to do so.
Well, there's a requirement by the board, as we've discussed several times, to have enough information to be able to make a finding of no unreasonably adverse impact.
There's been sufficient information provided.
Well, then I'll just end my cross-examination because Mr. Letizia thinks it's not necessary. May I proceed?
I didn't say that, Mr. Afrin. What I did say, I raised an objection, the chair would have to roll on.
May I proceed?
Yeah, the objection is noted, but given the standard that was articulated by Mr. Afrin, I think the questions are proper.
Thank you very much. I apologize, I should not have been sarcastic. To Mr. Letizia. What study or analysis have you undertaken as to the suitability of the site for wood turtle?
Again, there's no requirement to do a study of the wood turtle. I just, I just don't understand this line of questioning. Mr. Curtis did not testify about doing any kind of analysis or study of the wood turtle. What he testified to was that he reviewed the landscape data information on the DEP website, and there is no wood turtle.
He spoke to box turtle, actually.
Sorry, box turtle.
My question's now focused on wood turtle.
But there is, there is a separate question for relevancy, which is whether this goes beyond the scope of the direct examination, I think. You're very close to, if not over, the line on that.
I think it's directly within his conclusions of no unreasonable adverse impact from an ecological point of view. It's directly within the scope of that.
Again, based on the information that Mr. Curtis laid out for the board, and there was no discussion about a wood turtle or the requirement to do a wood turtle study. There was no need to do one.
Well, that's one lawyer's opinion. I think I'm permitted to go into the subject.
Why don't you continue?
Thank you. What would be the best way to determine the suitability of this site or any part of it as wood turtle habitat?
I'm not sure.
Would you agree one would have to at least inspect the site physically and make detailed observations?
Well, again, I'll just repeat, based on my previous testimony, that the review of the New Jersey DEP Landscape Project 3.3 showed the absence of wood turtle and only the presence of Cooper's Hawk. Cooper's Hawk was delisted from a 3 to a 2 rank, 2012.
Would you agree that to make an assessment now as to the suitability of this site as wood turtle habitat, one would have to inspect the site? It's a simple question.
Sure, my professional opinion, based on the regulatory data provided by the state, I would say no.
You testified that slide 24 shows succession beginning in 1980. Do you remember that testimony?
Slide 24?
Page 24, slide 24. You testified that this showed in the former agricultural area, succession beginning as of at least the date of this aerial map. Do you recall that testimony?
That's right.
And so that would be 35 years ago at least, according to your testimony, when the former farm went into succession, is that correct?
Yes.
Could you explain what succession means?
It means when an agricultural land is converting into early forest.
It doesn't go right to forest, does it?
No, it goes through scrub, land, and ultimately to forest at some point in the future.
Ultimately what?
Although the inspections that I walk through, I would say that the vast majority of this space, as shown here on the 84 aerial, is still successional. It's very weedy and overgrown, and actually, the quality of that might be better spoken to by our forester.
You would agree succession is the first phase of conversion back to woodland?
Yes.
And succession can come from a farm experiencing abandonment and then regrowth, or from natural features such as a burned forest?
Yes. Again, I again, I've testified on general environmental matters. Particular questions concerning forest growth might be better suited for another member of our team.
Well, I appreciate that. I was asking because it was a matter that you had addressed on your direct testimony. You stated there was a deep and well-established soil horizon on the cluster site. Can you explain what you meant by that?
I reviewed the US, United States Department of Agricultural Soil Surveys for the soils on the property, and they show a soil horizon of greater, of 60 inches, of at least 60 inches.
And what does that mean, a soil horizon?
Well, it essentially says the absence of bedrock to at least a depth of 60 inches.
And what was the significance of your mentioning that in your testimony?
Well, the issue was pertaining to the depth of bedrock with respect to potential future construction activities.
Just a clarification, did you say 60 or 16?
Six, zero, 60.
What archaeological survey have you or your client or any of its consulting team undertaken with respect to archaeological artifacts, ruins, remnants, or other features of that nature on the cluster site?
We reviewed the New Jersey DEP Office of Historic Preservation website for designated historical sites, and actually, we presented this information at the original testimony time.
That's slide 28.
Slide number 28.
Now, my question was, what archaeological survey did you, your client, or its consulting team undertake on this property?
We didn't do one, and it was not required.
You would agree that the New Jersey Registry only reacts to things that are reported to it, isn't that correct?
Well, they also do their own investigations, but these are the ones that show up on their website called Lucy.
Well, they don't enter a private property and start surveying it for archaeological features, do they?
I'm not actually sure how that, how that, how that takes place.
Your client has owned this property for many decades, isn't that true?
Yes.
And since, over the last 40 years, multiple efforts have been made by your client before this very board for approval of various development plans, isn't that correct?
I object to the question. It's outside the scope of the testimony. There was no discussion, there was no discussion direct about multiple subdivision application.
It's directly within the scope of his conclusion that Section 10B 2226b is found and satisfied, namely, that there is no adverse impact to archaeological, historic, scenic, or other features on the site. And he has himself presented a statement from NJDEP about historical registrations and findings by the state, and therefore, he's opened the door to the question of what his client did or did not do by way of analysis or reports to the state. It is directly within the scope of slide 28, which he introduced.
Madam Chair, I disagree. We did not open any door. He can ask questions about this exhibit. That's, that's fine, but again, there was no testimony about prior applications. Again, there's no requirement.
May I proceed?
I mean, I think it does come, the questions do come within the scope of the conclusions that were reached and articulated, and I think they're proper.
Thank you. Do you remember the question? We do have a reporter, if she could read it back, that might be convenient.
Could you repeat the question, please? I've testified that there were no documented scenic, historic, or archaeological landmark sites on the property during my initial testimony, and secondly, I'm not sure what the applicant did before I was brought on board.
Is it fair to say that an applicant seeking to commercially develop a large site such as this would have very little incentive to do a survey and report historical or archaeological artifacts to the Department of Environmental Protection?
I object.
I don't, I don't think that's a proper question.
It certainly is, because he's an expert in the field of environmental surveys and reviews, and that is directly related to the work of NJDEP in this field. He has the expertise to understand what clients do.
This doesn't call for an expert opinion.
I beg your pardon?
The question did not call for an expert opinion.
I don't have to be asking for expert opinion, but rather asking him to answer something which is in the common knowledge of someone who works in the field. It's a proper question.
I disagree. Why don't you move on?
Would you agree that the findings in slide 28 would have no validity if nobody ever surveyed this site for archaeological or historic factors?
I think, I think that's conjecture.
If no one ever surveyed this site and made any report to the state about archaeological or historic factors or artifacts, would you agree that slide 28 would simply not be relevant to this property?
No.
So is it fair to say that the sole basis on which you conclude in your professional opinion that there is no harm or adverse impact to scenic, historical, and archaeological sites on this property is because of slide 28?
Could you repeat the questions, please?
Is it fair to say that the sole basis of your professional opinion that there is no harm to scenic, historical, or archaeological sites to be caused by this project is based entirely on the information contained in slide 28?
No, actually, the master plan doesn't list the site as historic significance, nor does the 2010 Natural Resource Inventory for the municipality.
And do you have any knowledge as to what surveys underlay those conclusions?
All I did was read the master plan and the NRI.
So you made no independent evaluation of the site itself?
No.
You agree, however, that it's relevant because you yourself consulted these various documents?
What is relevant?
The question of archaeological and historic surveys.
I would say no, when all the available public information indicates there is no need to do surveys.
Would you agree that those documents depend upon surveys that someone conducts at some point? I'll just withdraw the question, I'll move on.
I presume so.
All right, thank you. I'll move on, sorry, we've covered it. Could the objectors or their experts or the board verify the absence of historic or archaeological features on the site if no one is permitted to inspect?
Again, going back to the beginning, we didn't say no one could inspect. We said the board and its consultants We said the board and its consultants could inspect the property.
Can the board mem, strike that, can my client's experts verify the absence of historical, archaeological features on the site if they are not permitted to inspect? It's a simple question.
Yes, by looking at the NJDEP data, the master plan, the ordinance, which does not designate this property as historic. Same information.
So in other words, the entire analysis of 226B is to be made without reference to an actual inspection of the site, is that your testimony?
No, no. Yeah, I inspected the property, but I can certainly say that the procedures I've gone through here, including the landscape project viewer, and the historic site viewer, and looking at master plans, and looking at natural resource inventories, and reviewing the environmental impact statement, these are all pieces of information that one can make a professional opinion about, and that's exactly what I did.
And you supplemented that by a visual inspection, is that correct?
Yeah, I've been to the site four or five times, that's correct.
Can I clarify one thing? I thought we had finally agreed after the long colloquy at the beginning, that the objectors' experts could access the site as part of, you know, the access by the township professionals. But now, Tom, what you just said a few minutes ago wasn't the same thing. Just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Well, we have to have the discussion, you know, the outline, the details, but generally, yes. But I was responding to the, I guess, the nature of the question, that no inspection is being allowed. That's not the case.
My question was focused on my client's experts' inspections, but we can move on. Obviously, Mr. Latizia and I need to speak and see if we can work out an agreement for inspections, but I also need to make a record in the event that we don't reach such agreement. Are you familiar with the concept of edge in connection with forestry?
This is beyond the scope of direct examination, I don't think the question is proper.
Actually, it's not at all beyond the scope. He concluded that the berm and utility easements have no adverse environmental impact, or no unreasonable adverse environmental impact. Obviously, when one cuts segments out of a woods, it creates edge, and edge is a well-known environmental factor and something that must be considered in evaluating disturbance. Therefore, it is directly within the scope of the opinion he gave.
The specific definition of those terms is probably more appropriate for one of our team members, the forester. I made my conclusions based on the fact that the cluster location was placed at where it was former agricultural land, and with small amounts of forest being impacted to the northern end of the subdivision, and that the vast majority, the rest of the woods, would be undisturbed and preserved open space. It's what, on first, appears to be very protective of the remaining woods, and that the utility easements and so forth, they exist, but it was my opinion that any minimal impacts of those utility areas are far outweighed by the preservation of the remaining woods on the property.
If you don't have the expertise to analyze the effect of creating forest edge, how can you conclude that there's only minimal impact to the forests?
I base my professional opinion just on the percent of the woods that are being disturbed for the utility easements, and compared it numerically with the rest of the opening space.
But you did not base your opinion by means of any analysis of the creation of forest edge, did you?
Just the analysis on what I just explained.
Is the answer to my question no?
I took an overall analysis in looking at the property itself, and looking at the proposed open space, and what's going to remain intact in perpetuity.
My question's very simple. Is it fair to say that your conclusions were reached without any analysis of the consequences of creating forest edge?
That was a quality of analysis.
Is it fair to say that your conclusions were reached without any analysis of the effects of creating forest edge?
No.
Did you analyze the effects of creating forest edge?
No.
What analysis have you made about the entry of invasive species that will be created by the clearing of woodland on this property outside of the cluster?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Do you have any professional knowledge of the effect of clearance of woods on the subsequent entry into the habitat of invasive species?
I'm not so sure that I understand your question. If you could repeat it in a different way, I'd appreciate it.
Do you have any professional knowledge of the effect of clearing woodland on the subsequent entry into the site of invasive species?
Again, that question may be better suited for one of our team members.
Is the answer no?
Is this within the scope of direct?
Yes, it is directly within the scope of direct.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jerry. How is it within the scope of direct?
Because he specifically stated there's no adverse impact from the utility lines and the other clearance areas on the would-be preserved woodlands, including the berm. Yet those clearance areas are obviously within the field of study that deals with the entry of invasive species. Is the answer to my question that you do not have such professional knowledge?
I don't. All I can say is, I've reiterated before, that the proposed development, very small areas will be cleared for the utilities and probably be maintained, and the remaining open space woods will be protected.
Outside of the actual, and you may want to refer this to the engineer, I'll accept that if you do, outside of the actual dimensions of the easement lines and the berm, are you familiar with what the broader area of disturbance for construction will be with respect to those easements and the berm area?
That's a question for the engineer.
You mentioned that a GP10 permit from DEP would be required for what you call the boulevard. Do you recall that? The boulevard.
That's correct.
And the boulevard means that entry lane that would be built from Harrington Road into the development itself?
That's correct, yes.
And you've just traced it, it's like a handle on the bottom of the map, and you're tracing it now.
Yes.
Now, that would need a GP10 permit, you said?
General Permit 10.
Yes, and... No such permit exists at present, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you need to gain consent from DEP to get such a permit, isn't that true?
That's correct.
And the same would apply for the GP2 permit for utility impacts that you testified to.
That's right. They're called general permits because they're fairly simple to attain, as long as you're compliant with the application information.
You can't build that entry lane, the boulevard, as of right, can you? It's not a question for Mr. Latizia.
What do you mean by as of right, Mr. Afrin?
The witness can answer as to his understanding. Tom knows exactly why I'm asking the question, and he should not be offering any colloquy before the answer is given.
I think it requires a definition. Because even in as of right, as I understand, it requires certain approvals. It just means you don't need a variance.
I have a question for the witness. Is it fair to say that you cannot build that boulevard, what we're calling the boulevard, that entry lane, as of right?
I'm not sure I can answer that question based on how it's framed. I don't know what you mean by as of right.
And if I asked you that question with respect to the roadway that was in the as-of-right plan, would your answer be the same?
I would answer the same.
Can I just have one moment, please?
If you're asking if we need permits from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, then the answer is yes. And that was clearly stated, and commonly attained.
I might suggest we not continue with the other witnesses at this hour, I don't know what the chair's preference is. I won't finish, so...
You probably wouldn't get very far. All right, so if we are going to stop at this point, then we need to talk about the next date for this. Jerry, you've talked to Eileen, and...
I mean, the next available date, subject to confirmation by Kerry, is September 19. No prior date? No prior date?
Well, can you make a statement, like, that we're carried up to 19?
Right, but you were going to check as to whether there were any other dates. Okay, thank you. So it's being carried to September 19, there'll be no further notice.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Move to adjourn. Okay, is there a second? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, I got to make sure I don't leave it.
Act yourself out.